Our acting or anyone, I'm sorry, my co-chair who typically runs the meeting is in route hopefully. But we'll go right into the public hearings. I do not think we have any minutes to prove so. Yes, again. Halleen agenda or application number or agenda item number one, application number twenty-two dash two-three-five-seventy from the Shamrock Restaurant Group LLC. Okay.
Hello, members of the commission. Emmanuel Zebokolam here on behalf of the Shamrock Restaurant Group LLC. To my right is the owner, I'll let him introduce himself.
Chair neighbor, owner.
We've taken the time to sit down with the administration during the interim that has happened and I believe that will be requesting a one-week continuance for this matter.
I'm sorry, do you need to put anything on the record?
I'll go ahead and do that now. This matter was a public hearing on this matter was originally scheduled for June ninth, which meeting was canceled to permit applicants to republish notice and redo the mail out. The next setting of the public hearing for this matter was August fourth, was subsequently continued to August eleventh due to issues with the the mail out again. My understanding is that, yes, we did, I'll confirm that we did the licensing supervisor and I met with Mr. Zebokolam yesterday, I believe it was, and our understanding is that the licensing, the licensing investigator did prepare a response and formal analysis of the second, the second mail out attempt, which was not been provided to Mr. Zebokolam at this time. A copy will be provided to him so that he can review it before the continued public hearing next week. If you wish, we can have the investigator appear and verbally report, although it will be the first time Mr. Zebokolam has heard this information and he will receive the written report and we will join in the request to continue to next week, public hearing kept open. So it's up to you if you want to hear it now or.
Why don't we defer? We do have a pretty heavy calendar.
Okay.
Thank goodness, right. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to continue agenda item number one, the one week of the public hearing kept open.
Oh, moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also, approving carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Nothing gavel.
Sorry for my cardiness. All right. Calling agenda item number two, application number two-two dash two-three-eight-four-one from Blade and Timber LLC, Mr. Nakoba.
Thank you very much, co-chairs, commissioners, Devin Nakoba representing Blade and Timber LLC. With me today on the Zoom are Matthew Basinger, B-A-Y-S-I-N-G-R, he's the owner, and Kevin Rodewall, R-O-D-E-W-A-L-B, he is the GM CEO.
Right.
Thank you, Madam Executive Chair and Commissioners. This matter was continued from the August fourth meeting, public hearing kept open. This matter, this application received a written protest, hundred-seven, hundred-and-seven signatures in support. Applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application, for the record, draft transcripts of the June ninth Plumeric hearing and the August fourth public hearing meetings were provided to all commissioners prior to the continued public hearing.
Commissioners, any questions or type of action for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Koba, I was not present at the last meeting. I do have all the materials and I did look through those. Thank you for providing that very comprehensive report. If you could, or or one of your clients could just provide a brief summary for me so that I can hear the safety standards that you're going to be.
Subsumary. One of the updates that we were able to do is Mr. Basinger and Blade and Timber has agreed to install, and these were requests by not just the commission but also members of the public that we spoke. We're going to be installing modular safety netting between the guest participating and the guest who's directly behind the participant. So they'll be fully enclosed. Also, similar to our policy adaptation in Washington State, we're going to drop the policy from three beverages per guest to two beverages per guest. Everyone will have to have a band as well to be participating alcohol. All staff will be twenty-one or older. The staff will also be trained by an outside consultant program or a class of safer protocols and ID training. The age of participation for younger individuals is going to change from ten years old to fourteen years old. Also, you have updated the policy and registrations and sure patrons cannot have consumed any alcohol before they enter and participate in an accident. There was a fear, or there was a concern that was mentioned that perhaps people will be doing, you know, pregame before they show up. And so to make sure that we keep that from happening, everyone will have to not be drinking before they show up. So the two drinks that they have will be the very first two drinks that they have. Also, we'll be not, we will not continue to allow outside access or knives. We just don't believe in it. We don't allow it in any of our areas. So we're not going to be having it here in a way. And also, the Honolulu Liquor Commission, we specifically indemnified against liability in the liability waiver. I actually presented, sent this to the commission earlier this week. I got this from Mr. Basinger and basically on the second page, it says parties and the Honolulu Liquor Commission from, sorry. I hereby deem to identify defendants from the facilitator parties and the Honolulu Liquor Commission for many such claims. This release a waiver of claims is binding on me, my heirs, executives, administrators, legal representatives, signs, and successes in interest. I understand that I'm giving them my right to sue the facilitator parties and the Honolulu Liquor Commission in giving out other valuable substantial rights in exchange for being permitted to participate in that. And that was something that the commission was sure, wanted to make sure that we put into our documentation as well.
Let me clarify, did that require it? I requested if that's something you would consider.
Something I'm sorry.
Let me re-speak myself. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Also, Commissioner Buckley, Mr. Basinger and Mr. Rodewall will be happy to answer any questions if we need a platform.
I just had one follow-up on in, I believe, one of the protest letters, there was reference or at least comparison to activities like a shooting range or an archery range. In your opinion, how would you distinguish yourself, or I suppose would you distinguish yourself from those types of activities that often prohibit liquor or don't even attempt to apply for their license?
Hold on, Mr. Basinger. Sure, this is Matt Basinger. I think that's a great question. I don't think it's a fair comparison. If I'm just being straightforward, I think a great comparison for our sport, it would be more like bowling and less like archery or like shooting ranges. And I think given the number of facilities that are currently operating under that logic as well across the country, we're looking at now close to two thousand ax throwing facilities in the United States, many of which serve alcohol. Given that there's been no incidents, no accidents that are known, I do think that they are very different types of facilities.
One final question before I hand it over to my fellow commission. I couldn't quickly locate the map in front of me. I know I did look at a depiction at one point, but the ax throwing area, I believe, is separated from the restaurants area. Could you at least explain to me where that is, what proximity and where this net's going to be and how that's going to be?
Basically, it's separated into lanes. So as you walk in the door, there's a lane immediately to your right. If I had to eyeball it for you, and I'm sorry, it's probably, the throwing area is probably from about where I am to the wall. It's a step forward, reach back, because I've actually done it. It's a step forward, reach back and throw. And now behind the person who's throwing, there will be a a closure. There was a, also a concern that the ax clips fly around, hits somebody. There's sawdust all over the ground. And they specifically show you a way to throw the ax and watch you every single time you throw the ax to make sure that you're throwing it correctly, not trying to relapse it, so to speak.
Mr. Nakoba, if I, sorry, Zoom makes it hard sometimes to jump in, so I don't mean to interrupt you at all. To give some more specificities to your question, the front of our throwing target and where most folks throw from is at twelve feet. Our lanes are eighteen to twenty feet in length, and so the netting will be installed at the back of the lane, which is eighteen to twenty feet. Or in general, anywhere from six to, if I can do my quick math, anywhere from three feet to six feet behind the throwers and three feet to six feet in front of any participants who are behind. So from thrower to participant, you have about twelve feet and in the middle of that, we would have the the netting that would separate our throwers from any participants behind them.
Basically, we have, there are six lanes, I'm sorry, ten lanes?
We have a total of ten lanes. Four of them are on what we ought to call, refer to as Plan North. We have two that are behind the bar fully enclosed and another two sets of two, one of which again fully enclosed to the right of check-in and then two more to the left of check-in. But every lane, especially with the netting, would now be fully enclosed, you know, to mitigate any potential risk of axes going where we wouldn't want them to. For the record, we do have comparable product at our Seattle location. And as a quick reminder, we did work with the state of Washington very closely through a public-private partnership over the course of a year and a similar trial period. We do not have back-of-lane netting at our facilities in Nashville, Leewood, Kansas, Wichita, Kansas, Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I did want to look myself at the facilities, but it ended up under COVID protocol, so I was named to. So thank you for the description.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Nakoba, I recall there was some question on the restaurant portion. Where's that stand?
We are right now in the midst of getting the permitting for the food service portion. So it's just the process. It takes a little bit of time. But as we promised, there will be no alcohol service until we get food service. Thank you.
I have a few follow-up questions. Oh, my first question is going to be, so provided the material you folks provided, the commission, I believe it's page listed in your documents fifty-six, which is, I guess, the new new section rules for, I'm assuming it's Washington, W E C three-one-four-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-six-zero. So inside that portion, right, there's a section that talks about ax throwing at liquor licensed premises. On B specifically, a floor plan for the premises, the floor plan must include the following, the designated consumption areas where alcohol may be sold, served, or consumed on premises. And number two, the ax throwing areas, the ax throwing areas must be separate from the designated consumption area. Alcohol is not allowed in the ax throwing areas. The ax throwing areas must have barriers, separate ax throwing activities from, activities from the designated consumption area, barriers must prevent axes traveling out of the ax throwing area. So my question is, is the current plan for the Honolulu Lady and Timber to be similar to this? Or is it where alcohol will be able to be consumed while they're throwing the axes?
No, we, just to make sure I'm hearing correctly, we never allow at any or for any reason ever. Same with the Honolulu facility. So we do not allow, similar to the language you're using, the language that is in our.
You cut out right in the middle of that. So if you could just repeat your previous statement.
Of course, my apologies. We do not allow ax throwing, or we do not allow alcohol consumption in the area of ax throwing lanes at any time ever at any facility, nor will we ever allow that.
Okay, so I guess my follow-up question with that situation then is, so are we basically talking, you're going to have six people in an ax throwing lane? Maybe out of that six people, two or three might be allowed to drink or maybe of age to drink or have decided to drink. So while they're throwing the axes, if they want to drink, they're going to leave that ax throwing area, go somewhere else and get the drinks? Or is it going to be, because I think previously, right, they had talked about the coaches going to pick up the drinks and bringing it to the people. So how is that specifically going to work? Can they walk in and out of the ax throwing area? I'm trying to understand the exact situation.
Sure. No, yeah, that's a great area. So, great question. And with your permission, would it be okay just for the sake of my audio going through if I turned my video off?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. I've just wanted to make sure it was being a little choppy and I don't want to lose audio. And so with our ax throwing lanes, there is only one person in the lane at any given time, and that is the person who is allowed to throw the ax. Directly behind the lanes is a table with seating for up to six people. And really, in your, the mental image that you might draw upon is a bowling alley. You only have one person of your group bowling at any given time. But there is a table that is shared by all of the participants in your party. And we do allow food and beverage consumption at that table, but we do not allow alcohol within the throwing lane itself.
If I could tack on one question to that, when you go into the ax throwing lane, is there, I thought I heard you, Mr. Nakoba, sorry if you, if I didn't understand correctly, but I thought I heard you say there was somebody there to to lead you into that area to make sure that you're throwing right and to possibly make sure that you're not inebriated.
Yeah, so there is a coach for every two lanes, and so one coach is viewing two lanes at all times. They are not physically inside of the lanes, except when they are providing specific instruction. Other than that, they are right outside of the lanes near the the other participants, the other folks who are in the party who may not be throwing at that given time. But they are at that, for the majority of the ax throwing lesson or ax throwing experience, they are among the other observers making sure that they can provide real-time feedback and help folks get better at the sport of ax throwing during during their time.
Just to close the loop on that, would they be the ones responsible for ensuring that anyone that goes up to throw an ax is not inebriated?
That is correct.
I have just a couple other follow-up questions. So I know we talked about that, we talked about that, or I believe that you folks have said the last time that you're looking at one coach for every two lanes, correct? And each lane would be able to have six people?
That is correct.
So each sees six, so we're also saying, six people at one time are not going to be in the lane. It's going to be one person at a time. And there's going to be situations where they're, you know, working between those two lanes.
That that is correct. And so a coach would only be overseeing two people throwing at any given time would be the maximum that they would be overseeing. And in that situation, there may be up to ten other people who, again, like a bowling facility, might be sitting at the table that is directly behind the throwing lane and under the rules that we are proposing to you all would be separated by some mesh netting to make sure that there are no axes that could ever leave the ax throwing lane itself.
Well, the person that's going to be watching these two individuals, if someone wants to go into the lane themselves, is they, can they actually walk into the lane by themselves? Or is there some way that that coach or person who's going to be watching them?
Yeah, I mean.
Not allow them to be in the lane.
Sure, they're watching at all time. We go through about fifteen minutes of rules and kind of regulations before folks even begin ax throwing. And we make it very clear that only one person is allowed in the ax throwing lane at a time. It's one of the rules that we strictly follow. It's one of those rules that we you know, really hammer home with our participants. And quite frankly, we don't have an issue with multiple people wanting to be in the ax throwing lane simultaneously. There's only one ax in each ax throwing lane as well. And so it's not like two people could accidentally go in and start throwing axes same time because there is only one ax in that in that area.
I guess a question I would have is, is the, would the company be open to, if we were to say that you needed to have one coach per lane, even though it's one person at a time, knowing that way they can check and make sure people are not inebriated or not, in a sense where they cannot throw the ax fairly or safely. So I guess that's like an out there for you folks to kind of think about. Is that, if that was to be something we were to discuss, is that something you folks might be open to?
I would certainly be open to the discussion. I think based off of the numbers that we know about our business, I don't think that's a financially solvent model of our business where we're having to double the amount of staff that we have. Particularly given the five years of experience that we've been doing this now, you know, where I think having a one-to-two ratio of coaches to throwers and a one-to-twelve ratio of coaches to, you know, potential party has felt really good and really safe. And quite frankly, is quite a bit stricter than many of the other facilities that we're aware of throughout the country. So again, I don't want to simply say no, because I don't think that's an appropriate answer. Obviously, we are open to whatever the commission maybe thinks is best in order to receive the trust and receive this license. I think what I'm trying to iterate simply is that we feel very confident with our policies. They are time-tested. And we really feel that the level of safety that we have been able to give through a one-coach-to-two-lanes ratio has a, has been a proven model that has kept our facilities safe, like incredibly safe for five years now.
Then my last follow-up question will be, I know the last hearing we had, you folks had discussed that, you know, even though you're applying for a restaurant general license category to that, you know, you didn't want to start serving food prior to serving alcohol, you wanted to serve them all together, starting everything together at the same time. Is that still something you folks are looking to do? Or, I mean, would you folks want to?
Yeah, and I think.
Restaurant issue first?
Yeah, that that desire is not so much rooted in that we don't want to do food before alcohol. It's, I think, more in line with the idea that our plan all along has been to turn both of those on at the same time. You know, from a general food service and alcohol service standpoint, from a staffing standpoint, to start adding both of those in conjunction with each other, I think historically has just made a lot of sense for our organization. And so our anticipation and our goal would be that we would not, if I can just be clear, we don't want to start serving alcohol until we have food. So my goal is not to start serving alcohol first and then food or food first and then alcohol. We really do just want to do them both at the same time.
I just would like to add up to that, Mr. Basinger, I don't think that Commissioner Hollinger is saying one or the other. This is a restaurant license you folks are applying for. So I think what he's asking is, is this going to be a restaurant? Or are we strictly focusing on the ax throwing? What what's going on with your, the restaurant portion of your restaurant?
You know, if we look at the other comparable facilities that we have, we do have food and beverages available for folks who are not ax throwing. And we also have food and beverages available for folks who are ax throwing. And so we would hope to be able to serve both types of customers.
Okay, so you have the restaurant menu and everything is set and planned and you folks are executing on that in tandem with this application?
That is correct. You know, we have since our last meeting had updates that our fire inspection, as far as the plans was passed. We're, we're waiting on, I believe, just one other thing. It's been a little bit slower than we would have anticipated. But yes, our plan is to do a full menu similar to what we're doing at our existing stores that are already classified as restaurants. Yes. And if I can add one more thing, one of the reasons that we leased this space in particular was because it already had a fully functioning kitchen that would allow us to institute such a restaurant, whereas our previous space where we had been operating for a couple of years did not have restaurant capabilities. So that has been our anticipation since the day that we moved into the space.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions before I have our testifier come up? We have Dave Cunningham would like to testify. Hi, Mr. Cunningham, come forward and Mr. Mr. Ricketts, where you at?
Do you swear the testimony you gave today, so you know it's true, false, truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Before you start, did you not testify last hearing?
Yes, it did.
I don't think you need to testify again.
I have a lot to add, actually, particularly with Commissioner Buckley bringing up an issue that I was going to talk about.
Okay, we'll entertain it, but if you could keep it to three minutes, just in the interest of time, and you can have a seat. Thank you.
A few little notes. Just for Commissioner Buckley, you weren't here when I testified last. I'm a regular store at Blade and Timber. I go to two to three times a week the last two and a half years. Commissioner Hollinger, kind of answer your question. We're talking about, the coaches are like hawks. They will hover over the people. The lanes are real close together. There's no way somebody's going to slip and slide around in the place as far as, you know, being able to be intoxicated, step into lane or double people to step into a lane. It's just not going to happen. That's my personal experience of the last two and a half years. Commissioner Buckley, you mentioned a firing range. The item I was going to bring up is relevant to the age limitation you guys are talking about. Do you know that the city and county through its parks, recreation and parks department facilitates and allows minors as young as nine and probably even younger by omission to handle more lethal fire weapons than acts, pokerhead firing range? And you might say, well, it's nothing to do with liquor, but I contend it does because the Blade and Timber coaches are acting in local parentes when they handle a minor at this facility. The coach is not drinking, the miner is not drinking, and they're facilitating that. And I guess the age limit, whatever you impose.
I understand that. I just wanted to mention that. Blade throwing is actually a recognized sport. It's on ESPN, as you can talk about, you know, the Olympics in twenty-twenty-eight. I'll be pretty old, but I'd like to give it a try. I'll be sixty-eight in nineteen sixty-eight, but I'd like to give it a whack, as they say, because I might as well get my name in there as being the oldest person to not qualify, but I'm actually a pretty good ax thrower, so I think I'd have a pretty good chance to maybe qualify. The the other things, as far as when I testified the last time, you were talking about safety, you guys were all seem to be worried about safety. I did yard work that Sunday after I last testified and cutting back at Bogon Villa, and I had twenty cut scratches, scrapes and and puncture wounds from working through Bogon Villa. And in the two and a half years that I've been going to Blade and Timber, I've thrown, by my count, four-hundred-thousand throws. I've never hurt myself, never hurt anybody else. I've never cut myself with a blade. The only time I got hurt was leaving the facility when I stubbed my foot on the city and county sidewalk. So it's, it's, it's a very safe, it's a very safe venture. My wife agreed with my analysis, but she said, I still can't get out of, out of the yard work before I go extra. So I have to do that. Risk mitigation, I believe Blade and Timber has taken every single step they possibly can to mitigate the risk in this environment. And you guys might say, who's this guy talking about risk? I didn't sleep at Motel Six last night. I'm actually a professional risk management manager for a subsidiary of a Fortune five hundred company. My business is risk. I manage risk in the construction industry. I visit not just from an analysis point in an office, I actually go out and visit sites and now analyze the site and determine if we'll issue a certificate of insurance or a bond in that particular job. So it's physical, physical.
Please summarize, Mr. Cunningham.
That's pretty much it.
I would say you didn't have it stated for the record yet whether you're in favor or opposed.
Oh, I'm in favor, definitely in favor. I didn't even try to get that. I'm here for selfish reasons. This is the only place in town. I have no way to practice. I wanted to get physical. I wanted to stay in business. And that's purely my motivation. I mean, it's something I'm addicted to, actual.
Thank you for coming down. We appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? That's right. Do we have anyone else listed?
Now, just what's on the sign sheet.
Okay. All right. Seeing as there's no further testifiers, commissioners, do you have any further questions or any type of action for the applicant?
Going to make a motion by the commission to go into an executive session to consult with this board's attorney any questions and issues on matters pertaining to the board's powers, did he produce his immunitys and liabilities?
I'll think.
I'll take it to convene a two executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
I also vote, I motion is carried. You are now in executive session. Thank you for giving us that time to begin the executive session. Thank you for your patience, commissioners. Do we have any further questions or type of action for the applicant?
No, but so my motion is going to be to approve application number two-two-dash-two-three-five-seventy with the following verbiage and conditions. So there's going to be a one-year trial, excuse me, one-year probation. And it's that one year, though, will not start. Um, and it's that one year though will not start until food or alcohol actually starts being served. Um, you folks will need to provide written notice to the commission on the date that food and alcohol starts to be served. The next thing will be is. Um, we will be following the limitations that you folks put together in your letter dated on. August twenty second, twenty twenty two, which was spelled out right, the safety netting, um, reducing the minimum drink number to two versus three. No one under twenty one. Number four, right, the training, fourteen years of age. Registration as well as, you know, all those things, no accident lives, that stuff. So. Um, and then the next thing we're going to have is we're going to ask you folks to appear in person. On the sixth month, the twelfth month after you start service, so that we. Can go through everything that's going on, make sure things are still being okay, uh, things of that nature. So we'll be happy to do that.
Do you get a second?
I'll think.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, two dash two, three, eight, four, one. With the verbiage in Commissioner Hollinger's motion. All those in favor?
All right. Okay, for the record, I'm going to vote nay. And I want to just let, um, you missing the coba know and your clients know. I did have serious concerns. I still have concerns about this activity. The good thing is we have a commission that is larger than three of us, so they can act. I think, and just in my own judgment, I just don't think this activity should be combined with alcohol, but you folks do have now. Presumably a one year period to demonstrate otherwise. So be safe, good luck.
Um, and for the record, I am voting I with reservations. I would like, since this is an application and a license for a restaurant. I would like the business to be focused on a restaurant rather than an activity. But I'm voting I, but with reservations. So the motion is carried, uh, application number two, two dash two, three, eight, four, one has been approved with conditions and a one year probationary carry. Thank you, Mr. Nakoba. Thank you, Mr. Basinger.
Thank you for all the material you guys provided and we requested. It's very helpful. Very, we're happy. Good luck.
Thank you. All right, moving on with the agenda, calling agenda item number three, application number two, two dash two, four, zero, seven, seven. From Y K Wave LLC DBA, the lookout.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Commission Member Kenneth Leprey for the applicant. Mr. Larry Castor is also by Zoom. He was supposed to be here in person, but he wasn't able. Some, something came up, couldn't leave the call. So he's now on by Zoom. And he is director, I'm sorry, he's the director of retail development.
Before we go further, Mr. Castor, please don't drive. We don't want to see you in a car wreck while you're participating. I hope you pulled over.
Yes, I am. I'm pulled over in a parking lot. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wright.
Uh, thank you, Madam Acting Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants that statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the June thirtieth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearing.
Commissioners, any questions or type of action for the applicant?
My motion will be to approve application number two, two dash two, four, zero, seven, seven.
Thank you.
They moved in second to approve application number two, two dash two, four, zero, seven, seven. All those in favor? I also vote, I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Who. Thank you, Mr. Castor.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, uh, calling agenda item number four, application number two, two dash two, four, zero, seven, eight. From Y K Wave LLC DBA Foam Coffee and Bar.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Commission Members Kenneth Leprey for the applicant, also appearing again by Zoom, Mr. Larry Castor, Director of Retail Development.
Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Madam Acting Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the June thirtieth. When their hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for the applicant?
Seeing no questions, my motion will be to approve application number two, two dash two, four, zero, seven, eight.
Second.
They moved in second to approve application number two, two dash two, four, zero, seven, eight. All those in favor? I also vote, I motion is carried, application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Castor.
Thank you, commissioners.
Calling agenda item number five, application number two, two dash two, four, zero, eight, one from Y C Ava Inc. DBA Ava Beach Golf Club. Aloha.
Good afternoon. You're on other members of the commission. Um, my name is Tony David and I am appearing on behalf of Y C Ava, the applicant. And beside me is.
Jake Cole.
Um, who is the corporate secretary of Y C Ava.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Madam, uh, Acting Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero protest, zero letters of support. Applicants that statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the June thirtieth. Preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Buckley prior to the, uh, public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
My motion will be to approve application number two, two dash two, four, zero, eight, one.
Second.
They moved in second to approve application number two, three dash two, four, zero, eight, one. All those in favor?
All right.
I also vote, I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. David. Calling agenda item number six, application number two, two dash two, four, one, two, seven from PF Chang's China Bistro. Mr. Lee, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Good afternoon, Commissioner Larry Lee, counsel for the applicant. Also, it should be attending by Zoom is Jason Lorenzo, who's the general manager of the restaurant. And Caroline, Caroline. Antonis is the name, but it shows differently on the Zoom. She's the assistant GM and the bar manager.
You have any changes to the investigative report?
No changes.
Yes, all right.
Uh, thank you, Madam Acting Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the June thirtieth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearing.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Questions. My motion will be to approve application number two, two dash two, four, one, two, seven.
Second.
They moved in second to approve application number two, two dash two, four, one, two, seven. All those in favor? I also vote, I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number seven, application number two, two dash two, four, one, two, nine from Oishi Family Restaurant DBA Beer Lab Hawaii. Mr. Wong, Mr. Miller.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Acting Chair, before we take up this matter, please let the record reflect that I must refuse myself from, um, agenda item number seven, application number twenty two dash two, four, one, two, nine. For potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Buckley. Mr. Wright.
Uh, thank you, Madam Acting Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or a type of action?
Sure, I'm sorry. Maybe I did not hear, but I don't, I heard them making appearance. Just make sure we have the record.
Yeah, um, Mr. Wong, I believe you're on mute. Can you please make your introduction?
Hi, sorry, Nicholas Wong, uh, owner of the Oishi Family Restaurant.
And Mr. Miller again, please.
Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Adam Miller, appearing on behalf of applicant, Oishi Family Restaurant.
Thank you. Any type of action? I'm sorry, I've been notified that we have someone online who wishes to testify.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, ma'am. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Lena Pomsuan. Um, I'm a staff planner at the Department of Planning and Permitting. I've been working on the zoning clearance for, uh, beer lab. So we have some comments.
Sorry, could I interrupt you just a second and swear you in?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Do you swear that the testimony you gave today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, proceed, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, we actually have some comments regarding, um, the location of the site. The, um, the proposed site is, um, in BMX three. Which would restrict bars from being in that area because it borders a apartment mix, apartment use. So, um, we're recommending that the liquor commission reduce the hours of sale of alcohol to no later than ten PM.
Thank you for your testimony. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the testifier?
Ma'am, I'm just curious, how did you get notice of this particular, um, agenda item? And I'm curious why you decided to testify.
Hi, yes, so, um, our department goes through the zoning clearances for liquor licenses. It was routed up to me in the land use permits division because we work on specifically zoning. Um, and based on the, uh, zoning of the site. We were looking into it to see if it's considered a bar use. Or a restaurant use. So, um, the applicant is proposing for it to be. A place where they serve food and alcohol, which is fine with us, but we want to make sure that. The use and the hours of operations is limited because there are apartments behind that lot.
You very much, and thank you for your interest. We want to make sure we, we, um. Approved licenses in compliance with law, with laws as well. So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
There's, are there any other folks online or in the galley that would like to testify on agenda item number seven? Seeing the other testifiers. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have a follow up for a gentleman online. Um, do you have any response to the woman who testified in terms of operation hours and the zoning issue?
Um, y- yes, I do. Um. I guess my biggest concern is that, uh, this is, uh. It's in, in the most respectful way, um, with the, in terms of the zoning clearance, we. Were asked to supply a, you know, a, a menu that really wasn't hashed out and, and it was. Again, I mean, um, our biggest point is that. We were confused on what was the determination that decided that they decided was a bar and what is a restaurant? From what the letter that we received, it appeared that it was due to the limited scope of our menu. However, that menu is really just something that, again, um. It's, it's not something that is normally asked when we go through zoning clearance. Um, and, and I guess my second kind of response to that is. I'm a little confused on the ten PM restriction as, you know, I mean, you know, even with a restaurant license, I believe the. The limitation is at twelve PM. Um, so I mean, I guess. I am, I am a little taken aback, I guess, on where these limitations are coming from. And, and really what the determination of what a restaurant versus a bar versus, you know, when, and the license that we are applying for is a. Small craft producer relation, which is a brewery license. Um, so I guess I, I'm a, I am a little. Uh, taken aback, I guess, on the, you know, the upfront restrictions on that.
Mr. Wong, um, how soon are you folks able to open for business?
Um, we, we do have quite a long runway to get there. Um.
Why don't we do this? Let me make a suggestion. We can continue this so you can. Evaluate and provide a written response to the, um, testifier in terms of restrictions, your position on that. And whether or not the zoning restriction even applies to you folks. Would that be helpful?
Um, I guess I, I would prefer, in, in my opinion, to, to not do that. Um, I guess we still, we still would have to go through DPP and, um, the testifier's department. Through our building permitting process. Uh, so at that point.
We can, we can, um, approve and put the restriction on your license if, if that's your pleasure.
And let me just interject here. You folks listen, list your hours of operation as Monday through Sunday, eleven AM to ten PM. And I believe that is the ten PM is where what they're asking for anyway. So. I don't see the issue because you folks have already proposed your closing time to be ten PM.
Yes, that, that is correct. Um, I guess the, the issue really arises from, you know, hey, I guess. We're at a hard stop at the ten PM hour.
Well, you would be anyway if we were to approve it as is because that's the hours you applied for.
Uh, uh, understood. Um. Yeah, I guess, you know, uh, we, we will be happy to just, we'll, we'll, we'll take the restriction. I guess we can, um. Yeah, we will, we'll be happy to be approved and take that restriction.
Commissioners, did you want to address any of the issues that were presented in the licensing investigative report regarding? Uh, issue brought up with HRS two eighty one dash eighteen, I'm, uh, dash one. Are you folks all right with those issues?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Um. I'm sorry, I guess I'm missing which, um, yeah, so I don't have the HRS directly in front of me.
This is a question for the other commissioners. Is that cor- is that correct? Excuse me.
Yes, I'm sorry. Um. We folks want to take a look at the issue that was raised.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right. All right, if there's no further questions, uh, can I get a type of action, please?
Let me make the motion, um. Into approve application number twenty two dash two, four, one, dash two, nine with the. Operation hours as set forth in the investigator's report.
Second.
They moved in second to approve application number two, two dash two, four, one, two, nine. Uh, with the restriction of hours operation no later than ten PM. Any objections or reservations?
Pardon me.
Motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Wong. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number eight, application number two, two dash two, four, one, nine, seven from eight, 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 eight. I'm sorry, can we get? Yes, thank you, Commissioner Buckley.
To my right, his name is Zhang G A K N G, who is a. In the corporation. We have, uh, we have no evidence or changes prior, uh, investigated or certain things.
Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Madam Acting Chair and Commissioners. This matter was continued from the July twenty eighth. Setting, public hearing kept open. In this matter, the, uh, application has received a hundred fifty two signatures. In opposition, uh, to the license application of that number of forty. Forty eight owners, lessies of parcels within five hundred feet of the proposed premises with valid, uh, protests representing, uh, two point seven percent. And thirty two registered voters within five hundred feet of the proposed premises with valid protests. Representing three point five percent applicants that statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the June second preliminary hearing testimony was provided to. Uh, Acting Chairman and Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Commissioners.
You do have, uh.
Yes, okay. We take questions from commissioners. We'll have the, um, testifiers. So let's see, I have listed here in person, um, Mr. Michael Kresenko. Come forward, please. Will you come forward here, Mr. Wright, I can sign you in? I mean, sorry, swear you in.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Yeah, do you swear that the testimony you gave today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
So what I have is, uh, something's being proposed here that has never been accomplished before. For the whole length of Cooberia Avenue on the Mauka side, there are bars that serve alcohol. But every one of them is on a hotel. but every one of them is on a hotel property or an extension of a restaurant. This will be the first time a standalone bar has been proposed, so there's no restaurant, there's no hotel, there's no checks or balances that are being part of another business would provide. And it's proposed in our neighborhood, which is Kailani, Clegg Horn, and Tucatara. They're residential condos, apartments, and houses from Coquill Avenue all the way back to the hollow line. And mostly these buildings were built like in the sixties, so it's like jealousy windows and open air platforms. They capitalize on the trade winds, but they're pretty vulnerable to street noise. And there is this phenomenon, unique to Waikiki, that occurs every night right after the bars close. Now we're going to experience it right next door to us. We were told only a new liquor license may be denied if forty percent of the owners leases voters within five hundred feet sign a protest. We did get that for Governor Clegg Horn, as far as I could understand, from the signatures. Saturday, I went down and talked to the neighbors and collected signatures. And their number one comment was, when has a bar ever made a neighborhood safe? And then I was also asked why Triple Eight Phoenix wasn't out there trying to get signatures for the bar? And I wasn't able to answer those. I just said, we'll try to stop, just please try to sign. And the other problem that was frustrating is that people were wanting to sign from the neighborhood, but I told them only the ones within five hundred feet could, but there was a lot of other people that wanted to sign. But that was our restriction. And the reason being is because of all the additional commercial traffic that we get there with the bar access, the deliveries, the Uber rides, because they'll originate at the only entrance to our neighborhood. That's that, where that bar is right where everybody has to get into the neighborhood if it's a vehicle. Our streets are narrow, they don't allow parking. The delivery trucks that we get either block the road or they block the sidewalk. If you get behind a refuse truck, you just have to wait. So what happened was in two thousand fifteen, the Mauna Street Front Parcels on Coquill Avenue were rezoned to apartment mixed use for Coquill Avenue. Marquee Waikiki was included, even though it's triangle shaped. So it can't conduct any business on Coquill Avenue. I missed working on that one, so I can only hope that our efforts will start with this one. The bar belongs on the mixed use Coquill Avenue, not the residential Kailani. The neighbors are upset because basically you're taking away our buffer from all the parties in Waikiki. That, that was our area to give us quiet. It's a big project. A lot of effort was put into it. I understand that, to bring it to realization, including hiring a consultant previously employed by the Liquor, Liquor Commission. Compromise is important in all situations, but a bar twenty feet away from my home, it's a valuable asset for the owners of two oh nine Kailani, but it's a huge degradation in quality of life for the rest of the neighborhood.
Fine.
The liquor, just when I say, the liquor commission has an obligation to verify all the legal requirements on that. And I would also hope to do an overall assessment of the impact a new license would have for the affected area. You're right, I got three twenty three. I wanted to slow down. Okay, sorry.
You can summarize. Go ahead, sir.
No, that, that's all I said. That was my Super Bowl commercial and all I did was you buy my product because it's, it's really important to the people there. I, I have no problem with, you know, commercialism. It's just, it's right there.
Let me ask you this. How long have you lived at this?
Ten years.
Complex, okay. And in that ten years, have you frequented any establishing establishments around there and around your neighborhood?
Oh, they're, they're all over the place. It's just that they stopped at Coquill Avenue. They don't come into our residential. So, yes, we don't have any commercial activity. This will be the first time. So that's the only reason that we're kind of all having a real hard time with it. There's been no commercial activity at all until this development.
I understand. Thank you, sir. All right, I believe we also have Ms. Denise. I'm sorry, I don't want to mispronounce your name. Voiceford?
What they are.
Where they are, okay.
I know I did testify last time. I have some new exhibits that might be of interest to you.
Mr. Wright, I swear you in.
You swear that the testimony given today's here will be the true, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
My name is Denise Waver and I live at two twenty five Kailani Avenue. Please do not allow a bar to open right below my pillow. Here is a petition signed by thirty four people who live in my building. It was submitted to you, but as of this afternoon, it wasn't on your online. You know, I don't know if it's in your board pass.
We have.
I just want you to see this now. Also, another petition was an online that had a hundred signatures or several testimonies by other owners in my building who got confirmation receipts. Everyone does not want a bar, and even if it closed at ten P M, we don't want the bar. I'm worried that you may not be basing your decision on the actual number of residents against the bar because the voices of non-property owners and non-Hawaiian voters don't count. Waikiki's population is unique. It includes thousands of residents who are travel nurses, in the military, university students, contract workers, and snowbirds who still vote in other states, but they live there. International residents with green cards, school or work visas, live here but don't even have a stay. But the quality of life of everyone near this bar will be impacted by it. Waikiki State Senator Moriwaki and Representative Tam and Council Chair Tommy Waters do not think this bar will be good for our neighborhood. This is a notice of violation from the D P P. I did kill of the owners of eight 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 Phoenix for operating an illegal, unpermitted food truck. One of them even owns the building. Now they want to disturb the neighbors with even more with a bar. Here is a map that was submitted with the application. Why did they choose such a vague one, not a clearer one with more details with land parcels and buildings near them on it? It's deceptive. Just like the ten P M closing time in the application that verbally became no later than twelve during the July twenty eighth hearing. Here is a corrected map. Now you can see in purple all the residential buildings near them on our small one-way streets. And lastly, at the July twenty eighth hearing, there was some focus on the applicants being local. I know local is important here. I do understand that. But please be reassured that this bar will exponentially affect the lives of many local and non-local residents. My building has many local families and non-local families in it. It has children and it has doctors who treat local patients and teachers who teach local students. They don't need to listen to bar activity all evening. It's not like we live in a dry town and have nowhere to go. We simply do not want or need a neighborhood bar on our small residential street right below our pillows. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you very much for that.
Do we have any other of the public wishing to testify in person or online? Being no one else. Mr. Nishiyoka, do you have any response to these protests?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. First of all, I believe the testifier just now stated that the applicants were, we didn't say that. We were, I believe, by recollections, right? Are the focus of this establishment would be the local, you know, local community right there in that area. You know, it's not, we admit that, you know, parking, there's no parking there. There's a lot of cars on the street we don't, you know, who uses it. So therefore, in talking with, talking to Raymond, you know, the focus is on that community. If you look at what we've submitted, the menu, you know, the menu items clearly show a type of menu that is conducive to actually a restaurant. But because of the infrastructure there in the building, it is not cost effective to reach there, otherwise this would be a restaurant scandal. And it you know, but we thought the first test far, why we didn't go and get letters and support. Number one, we don't want to create, create a rift within the community, we have people in support and against. So clearly, you know, we don't want to create that. Thirdly, I'm unaware of any opposition from Senator Moriwaki or Representative Tam. We did not receive that. I did take a look at Congressman Waters's brief letter. And it appears, even from his letter, I don't think, you know, he never reached out to us or his staff to find out what type of establishment this is going to be. Been talking to Raymond about this and I, I said, you know, what are you trying to do? He didn't create the business plan and the menu. And he says, he's trying to create a situation where people first can go and eat, have a drink, and go home. And if you look at the background of the applicants, Raymond is a former restaurant owner in Waikoloa, which is a resort area. He is also from a general manager of Panya. Dennis, the other general manager, I believe, manager at Panya. Their background is not, you know, you know, definitely a bar kind of thing. It's in a restaurant, and that's what we're trying to do here. And, you know, what he really wants to do is put this establishment together and show the, show the residents of that area that this is someplace that they can be proud of together and have a good time, have good food, good drink, and leave. And, you know, they want to be good neighbors. Again, building itself, its structure is very, I think, there's no problem with the noise in, in going to, going to the outside, the windows will not be open. We're not asking for outdoor seating. And if you actually go to, to the premises as we have, you can see that it's very the possibility of noise going, you know, out into the public is very low. And again, we are not talking about amplified music. We are not talking about live music. Anything we're just talking about, you know, background, it's getting elevated music, if anything. So I think a lot of what's going on here is possibly misinformation that they, you know, we cannot reach out to the public. We, we had, we went to the neighborhood board, as the neighborhood board chairman indicated, they have no, he had no concerns other than the noise, and we are cognizant of that. We want to be good neighbors. And we are more than willing to show that we are going to work with them and want to make a family friend, friendly type of establishment.
I see here that this, the proposed premises is a ground floor of what looks to be a mixed residential building. Is that correct? How many residents live in that building? And have you folks talked with any of the folks at two oh nine Kailani? I'm not speaking of the governor of Clegg Horn. I'm speaking of the building that you folks are proposing to have this establishment.
I've worked here for over a year. Most of the tenants there actually likes the convenience, so having something to eat without going further to was a mobile device, which should be permitted anywhere along the street, but we parked there. And it's too, we didn't know the zoning was not allowed because when we asked the, we helped the farmer where the food truck is mobile. So we should not be like violation of any zoning with your mobile. But since we parked it there and someone came and said, oh, you are against zoning. So also, once we knew that, the state gave us a notice, we moved it within a second day. So actually, we, you know, want to upgrade if it's not legal, so that's what we did. And the tenants upstairs, because they're having something to eat in the area, I have a lot of elderly folks that live sort of in the street, they actually come out by dental, they come and buy, you know, food. So it's, some people don't like upstairs, some people like upstairs, so I, I didn't know. Actually, they can actually ask people to sign support. That's something that we didn't do because I didn't know that was possible.
So your, this establishment would be selling the same or similar food as you were serving at your food truck?
No, because of limited equipment, something would be made simpler. While I have the food truck, I have more equipment to deal with, so it'll be a little bit different. I'm trying to keep more of the healthy stuff for the older folks that, you know, sometimes you just go out and buy.
I know your experiences with Panya. I'm very familiar with their menu. They have a lot of healthy options there as well. I'm just trying to get a feel for, you know, if you've spoken with the folks in that building and if they are.
Upstairs, most of the tenants are new to with us, so we always, is it always five foot four, so?
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, Ms. Nishiyoka, the woman who testified indicated that one of the owners owns that, the owners of this applicant owns the building. Is that accurate?
What, what's going down there? The owner of the building is Waikiki Martini, one of the, it is a corporation. The officers of the corporation directors are Hiram Young and Kim and Young, I believe this is. Mr. Young is a member of this corporation. Again, it's a corporate entities. It's not individually.
So the, the building where we're just describing the tenants, they're actually tenants of the corporation owned by.
Correct.
Correct. I I'll tell you, I did not get through all of the protests and we did ask you to come back with a business plan. Thank you for that. I did not know or think it would invite more protests. But there seems to be a lot of opposition with the surrounding neighbors and including Council Chair Tommy Waters. I personally want to walk around, take a look at the area. The maps, the photos don't really give me the they don't do justice for me to understand the complaints raised by the protesters, including the testifiers here today. I mean, I do want to look more closely at the protests. So a question for you folks, and I think last time you folks did not start construction. What's the status?
Well, I mean, major construction renovation work is not commenced.
Okay, because I want to make, I'm going to ask if you want to do a continuation, but I don't want to prejudice you if you've started construction. And I just want to take a look, probably from city streets and sidewalks. I'm not going to look in the building, look in.
But I, I, I hear you. I understand what you're saying. I would have no objection to that, but frankly, what I said, however, all for the testimony.
Because I think, I think you folks would appreciate, given the objections and concerns, we want to make sure we make a good, sound decision, not only for your client, but also for the neighborhood.
If you want to set that up, we'd be more than happy to set that up. I mean, as long as there are no issues with our such a laws like that.
And
if you need us to, you know.
No, I don't, I don't even want anybody to be there. I will look from the public streets and the public sidewalks.
I, I would say this, Commissioner, okay, in my alter, even what I do. Personally, I have approximately four, three to four tenants in that area. And across the street, I would say another five. Of those, let's say nine, I believe that or more, like seven or eight were related. And I think the nature of this book, you know, this business, and I, I would advocate for it in a sense where I think in talking to Raymond, that this is kind of business that, you know, will draw good people to the area. If they don't, you know, they're really concerned with just trying to do something good for the area. I'm sorry to say that because I can't, I can't say it.
I hear what you're saying. What I'm hearing you say, Mr. Nishiyoka, is that there's efforts to clean up the area.
Correct.
And this can attract a better type of people to the, I understand that.
You know, I can tell you that doing this in Waikiki, I've done it at least twenty five. And ninety five percent of my trouble.
Just so I can, um, I also, at a certain point, go along with Commissioner Meier, sure, I'd like to see the area, see how things are. The thing that I think you and your client need to really, really think is, we've talked about this. You both have said you're interested in making a bar area or a restaurant area for the community. But there is a lot of people in the community that are not so much happy in the sense of, of what it is. So I'm also concerned in a sense of that. I know we want to bring in the right people maybe there, right, to come to his restaurant, come to his place. But also there is limitations on where those people will be able to park, go, and get to. So I just, you know. So I just am, you know, I want everyone to know that that's, you know, there is, there is people out there voicing that this isn't something they want, so.
You know, Commissioner Holger, I hear you, and that's why we're trying to address that. But I'll also point out that if you look at the overall map of the community, right, there's more, a lot of these are coming from one building. You know, feel what I'm saying? And it is more in the community. I mean, you know, like I said, we could have gone out there and, you know, gotten better, so, you know, support, but we did not want to create a rift.
I mean, I, I hear that, I'm more somewhat concerned with, if it does go there, or it is there, it is approved and it gets there, you'll have a rift anyway, based off of that one building, if it is that one building. I mean, but of course.
Again, it is our job at that point, yeah, to basically do a paradigm shift, to change the thing, to ensure that people, this was a good thing.
One last question before anything a motion, Mr. Nishoka. Um, would your, your client be open to restricting the hours? I know that you folks have applied to stay open until midnight, would you folks be amenable to 10:00 P. M.?
Yeah, only food wise, 10:00 P. M. would be, be good, but it is a voice operation, so I think 12 would be the better time to.
I understand that, but you can hear the concerns from the community about noise. This is the liquor commission, so the food part, that's up to you folks. With the alcohol, ten people tend to get louder and louder as they're drinking, especially later and later. And that's when we have families that are trying to sleep, folks that are, you know, wanting some peace and quiet after 10:00 P. M. So I would be inclined to restrict the hours to 10:00 P. M. in order to help you folks have some better relationships with your neighbors. Also, I am concerned about the noise issue. And especially because there isn't parking, folks are right by the street, you know. So this is going to be people usually walking from other areas or, you know, things like that. And when people have to walk to and from parking, when they've been drinking, it tends to be very loud. And I can understand why your neighbors are concerned about that, because there are many, many establishments in this area. So we don't want to bombard them too much. So I would think about that, because I, I don't think that a midnight license in this neighborhood is something that I would. So commissioners, do we, are we going to anything a continuance here?
I have just a couple of quick questions.
Okay, of course.
And I'd like to ask them now, instead of at a future hearing, just in case you wanted to prepare anything for the future hearing. Before us is a dispenser license, often it's colloquially known as a bar license. But you've represented in these hearings that you're more akin to a restaurant rather than a bar. One requirement under a restaurant license, which of course is not before us, the one requirement is a percentage of sales breakdown, which you didn't have to provide with this license. Do you have any indication from your projections or budgeting what that percentage would look like in terms of sales versus food?
Thirty percent food is a minimum for, you know, cafe, like I have a bar. Actually, it would be, to me, I would say more like half and half food and drinks would be equally divided. I need to approve anything.
And again, to clarify, we would have done the restaurant, but in physical plan itself, it would require a restaurant. And for them to put a restaurant in that location, the cost would be prohibitive. That's why if you look at the business plan, which we submitted, you know, it utilizes a lot of current technology as far as air fryers and. It's the budget setting, I'm still living here, so.
I'll age myself here, but Mr. Nishoka, you understand, this is what we used to call a poopoo bar, right?
No, I, I agree.
Is this what we're looking at as a poopoo bar?
I feel like the menu is much more, it's much more extensive than that, I think it reflects Raymond and Dennis's experience with Panya and his own restaurant in Waikato. So then, in the.
And that's why I wanted to clarify, because a dispenser license has the capability of selling primarily alcohol and not very much food. What you've represented, at least at the hearings, is that possibly the opposite would be true in your model.
Right.
Thank you. I'm also looking at the, and thank you for the supplemental report that you provided, I'm also looking at the, the site plan. It looks like you have approximately nine four tops. And I just wanted to make clarification on this floor plan, is that a bar, a six top bar? Or what is that long table? It is, it is the bar.
Yes, in the back will be, on the side will be all drinks, and then there's the bartender, there's a.
Yeah, we have no objection to continue, continue the map, just so as long as all for the testimony is submissions.
I'd be inclined to keep the public hearing open, Mr. Nishoka. Ms. Ray, can we get a date in about a month?
In 2029. About fifteen, that's, sorry, September 22 or 29?
Motion to continue agenda item eight, with the public hearing kept open until September 2022.
Yeah. September what? Twenty-two or twenty-nine?
I can read my reading. I think to continue agenda item eight, with public hearing kept open to September 22, 2022.
I move in second and to continue application number two-two dash two-four-one-nine-seven to September 22. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote aye, application is continued. Thank you, Mr. Nishoka. And thank you all those that came to testify. We're moving on with the agenda, calling agenda item number nine, application number two-two dash two-four-four-six-one from YHL Investment Inc., DBA Kenkoya.
Those extra. Hello, Madam Chair and Commissioners. There's not, it's not going to be any extraing for us today, okay? James Lee, representing YHL Investment Inc., DBA Kenkoya. Participating in today's hearing is Miss Stephanie Lee, in view of the applicant who's the mother, Chanmi Kim. She had had a doctor's appointment, so Stephanie Lee, can you state your name, please, make your presence known?
We can barely hear you, is there any way you could speak closer to your microphone?
If there's that, we'll just have to reschedule.
Look, maybe I'll just pull up the, can you hear me better now?
Yes, that's a little better.
Hello, can you hear me better?
Yes. You have to turn on your speaker so you can hear us.
How about now?
A little better.
Hello, better?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, okay, I was about to introduce the manager of Kenkoya, Stephanie Lee, can you make yourself known to the Commissioners, please?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Lee.
She's the manager, also she's participating in today's hearing, in view of the applicant who's the mother, and then she had a doctor's appointment today, unfortunately.
You, Ms. Haray.
That, thank you, Madam Acting Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants have statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the June 30 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearings.
Thank you, Ms. Haray. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for the applicant?
My motion will be to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four-six-one.
Second.
Then move in second and to approve application number two-two dash two-four-four-six-one, all those in favor? I also vote aye, motion is carried, application is approved, thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 10, application number two-two. Aloha Health Bar and Cafe, I believe we have a typo on the.
That's correct.
Okay. Aloha, not aloha.
No.
It's Nishoka again.
Good afternoon, Acting Chair, members of Commission, Commissioner, on behalf of the applicant, Andrew Lim, L I M. Officer in the corporation.
Ms. Haray.
Thank you, Madam Acting Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants have statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the June 30 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or type of action?
Questions, my motion will be to approve application number two-two dash two-four-eight-seven-three.
Thank you.
And move in second and to approve application number two-two dash two-four-eight-seven-three, all those in favor? I also vote aye, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Nishoka, Mr. Lim. Calling agenda item number 11, application number two-two dash two-four-nine-eight-five from Poliuli Restaurant, DBA Eagle Cafe, Mr. Lee again.
Hello again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. James Lee, representing Poliuli Restaurant Inc., DBA Eagle Cafe. With us today is the owner and also the applicant, Soon Ok Kim, K I M. Can you say hi, Ms. Kim, to the Commissioners?
Yes, hi, this is Soon Ok Kim, the owner of the restaurant.
Thank you.
Ms. Kim. Ms. Haray.
Thank you, Madam Acting Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants have statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the June 30 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearing.
Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
Seeing a question, my motion will be to approve application number two-two dash two-four-nine-eight-five.
Second.
And move in second and to approve application number two-two dash two-four-nine-eight-five, all those in favor? Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote aye, application is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you very much, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Moving into special license applications, calling agenda item number 12, application number two-three dash zero-zero-one-eight-seven from Kailua Racket Club Limited. Hi, good afternoon, please introduce yourselves for the record. Kaihate, C O N I E T A T E.
Jared Carsten, J A R E D C A R S T E N N.
And this is for a special nonprofit general license, correct? And I believe I have 12 dates listed here. Why don't you give us a summary of your event and proposal?
We hold a tennis tournament at the Kailua Racket Club the end of every summer, and it is open to all the top players in the state. This will be the 50th, we didn't get to have the last two due to the COVID restrictions, so.
I recall us approving these in the past before the pandemic. Have you folks had any issues, alcohol-related issues in the past? How many folks you think will be attending?
Between 100 and 200.
Commissioners, any additional questions or type of action?
I guess one real quick question, I know most of the people that'll be attending, this is going to be part of your own club, correct?
Correct.
So if there is issues with these guys, maybe, hopefully no one will drink too much, they'll be able to park there, leave their car there if they need to.
Absolutely.
That's, my motion will be to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-one-eight-seven.
Second.
Then move in second and to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-one-eight-seven, any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote aye, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you.
I'm sorry, please remain seated, because she'll pick up 27.
Yeah, I'll take up 27.
The related one.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so you folks can get out of here. Let's see. Are you there with me? All right, calling agenda item number 27, request number two-three dash zero-zero-one-eight from Kailua Racket Club. Please introduce yourselves again.
Jared Carsten, J A R E D C A R S T E N N.
And this is a related request to increase temporarily increase or reduce, I'm sorry, we almost never get that. We don't see a license premises for the, for those 12 dates listed during your event. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
My motion will be to approve request number two-three dash zero-zero-one-eight-eight.
Second.
And move in second and to approve request number two-three dash zero-zero-one-eight. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote aye, most motion is carried, request is approved, thank you.
Thank you very much.
After the regular agenda, calling agenda item number 13, application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-three-three from Kohls and Catering by Sinu Blan. Sinu Blan Catering, am I not correct?
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Sam Malero, General Manager for Kohls and Catering by Sinu Blan.
And this is for a boxing event, correct, Mr. Malero?
Yes, ma'am.
At the Philcom Center.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action for the applicant?
Yes, Chair, Mr. Malero, I noticed you have, you doubled your HPD presence from one to two, is that right?
Correct.
How many security guards are you going to have, the report does not show the number?
So for HPDs to, for the private security that the client is bringing in, from when we spoke, he was talking about three to four additional security.
Thank you. Another question, move and approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-three-three.
Second.
And move in second and to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-three-three. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote aye, motion is carried, application is approved, thank you, Mr. Malero.
Thank you.
And we also have you for number 14, calling agenda item 14, application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-eight-six from Kohls and Catering by Sinu Blan. Mr. Malero, please introduce yourself again.
Good afternoon, Board members, my name is Sam Malero, General Manager for Kohls and Catering by Sinu Blan.
And I have this as a birthday party, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
How many people are you going to have in attendance?
For this one, just about 200, just under 200.
How many approximately of those do you think are going to be minors in attendance?
It's the first birthday, so I'm, I'm guessing about 15 to 25 kids.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions or type of action?
My motion will be to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-eight-six.
Second.
And move then second and to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-eight-six. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote aye, motion is carried, application is approved.
Thank you.
Thing agenda item number 15, application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-eight-seven from Kohls and Catering by Sinu Blan, Mr. Malero again, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Sam Malero, General Manager for Kohls and Catering by Sinu Blan.
This is another birthday party, correct?
Yes, ma'am, first birthday.
My motion will be to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-eight-seven.
Second.
And move in second and to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-two-eight-seven. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote aye, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Malero, and good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number 16, application number two-three dash zero-zero-three-zero-four from Bamboo Catering, Mr. Webb.
Oh.
Oh. You. This is for a private party, party at, see, you have a different location, this is on South Fairland Street.
We used to work with Mr. Malero.
I know, I'm familiar with your work at the Philcom Center, so why don't you tell me about your new location?
It's the Japanese Cultural Center, it's on the fifth floor at 2454, South.
It's on the fifth floor at 2454 South Brooklyn.
Wow. Okay, and this is for a private party on September 50th, which is a Thursday for us?
Yes.
No minors in attendance, about 125 people.
I believe they are estimating between 125 and 150. There'll be no minors.
Thank you. Commissioners.
It would be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, four.
Second. And move then second and to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, for any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Calling agenda item 17, application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, five from Bamboo Catering, Inc., Mr. Webb.
David Webb, authorized agent, Bamboo Catering.
And this one is a smaller party, approximately 100, and there will be minors in attendance?
This one I do expect there to be minors. General rule of thumb for these kind of parties, I would say about 10 to 15%.
And why don't you walk us through or remind us of your process of how you folks are going to age verify?
Well, we don't do cocktail service at the table. People have to go to the bar, and the bartender will check everybody. Any, even if he looks underage, he's very good about it. Cards people are 30 years old all the time. Hard to tell.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
It would be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, five.
Second. And move then second and to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Calling agenda item 18, application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, six from Bamboo Catering, Inc.
David Webb, authorized agent, Bamboo Catering.
Well, this one's even smaller. This is a call on a cocktail party for 60 people with no minors in attendance, correct? Commissioners.
My motion would be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, six.
Second. And move then second and to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Calling agenda item number 19, application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, seven from Bamboo Catering, Inc.
David Webb, authorized agent, Bamboo Catering.
Right, and this one is for, oh.
Whatever coronation event is.
Right. October 22nd.
Yes.
Okay.
He's being coronated. I believe this is in the gay community, they have a king and a queen every year that they elect to the royal court. And so I'm actually having a meeting with them next week, and interested in finding out more about.
Admission is charged for this one.
I believe they sell tickets, yes. We don't charge it, but they sell tickets.
Thank you. It would be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, seven.
Second. And move then second and to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, seven. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Calling agenda item number 20, application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, eight from Bamboo Catering, Inc.
David Webb, authorized agent, Bamboo Catering.
This is for November 3rd. Liquor bar, no minors in attendance for this one, correct?
We don't anticipate minors. It's a fundraiser.
Commissioners.
My motion would be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, eight.
Second. And move then second and to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, zero, eight. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. That's it for you.
That's it for me.
Good luck on your events.
Permanent license, and I want to have to come down.
How about that? We won't get to see you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one. Calling agenda item number 21, application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, zero from Groove Child Charities. Mrs. Suchiya, nice to see you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Aloha, Lan Suchiya for Groove Child Charities, L A N C E, T S U C H I Y A. Also appearing, Jim Swider, General Manager of Kapolei Golf Course, and Tracy Wong, Head of Banquets Events.
See. This one's a bigger one for you, right, Mr. Suchiya?
Speculative, bigger area, proposed area. However, that should be, you know, documented a little bit more once we get closer to the event date and get a good grip of the amount of tickets sold.
And this is going to be at Kapolei Golf Course, correct?
Correct.
And this is in conjunction with the Hawaii's Finest Entertainment?
Correct.
I have a stupid question, but in my packet, there appears to, it looks like there's a golf tournament photos, but it's supposed to be a concert. I don't understand.
There is a, there is a golf, there is a golf tournament earlier on during the day. You know, there was a lapse in communication earlier. We were intending to do the golf tournament and then roll into the concert afterwards. We were under the impression that the golf tournament will be covered by the liquor license of the golf course. However, so we submitted an application for that recently, just this past week. So that should come up again.
Okay.
I called investigators.
The venue here for is between 4:00 and 11:00.
Correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. I had mixed up.
Yeah.
My motion would be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, zero.
Second. And move then second and to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, zero. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Suchiya.
Yeah, they have number 30 also.
Yep. Calling agenda item number 30, request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, one from Dito USA Inc., DBA Kapolei Golf Course. And I think that we need your other folks to come up for this. So this is agenda item 30?
Jim Swider, S W I E D E R, the General Manager, Kapolei Golf Compete.
Oh. Yeah, why don't you come forward as well, since you're here? Banquet and events for Kapolei Golf. Thank you. All right.
Sorry, just to clarify, there is a golf tournament that day? When does that end?
I think we'll probably get over about 9:30, 6:00.
Because if you're going to reduce your license from 12:00 PM, that might be a problem. Reduce the license premises for the concert.
That'll give you my question too, because he's got a license from 4:00 to a certain time. You folks are reducing your liquor license from 12:00 to 4:00. So who's going to take the liquor license over from 12:00 to 4:00?
Is that for the golf tournament?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
For the golf tournament, we submitted application to cover from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Okay, so let me sure you folks know what you're reducing, and we'll see you next week or the week after.
So this is to allow him to apply to use that space that we're reducing. Okay, thank you.
Wait a second, I'm getting a strong shake from the licensing supervisor.
You'd like to provide us with some information, Mr. Sato?
Supervising Investigator Daniel Sato. The previous license that you, the previous application for nonprofit was for the entire event, for the actual concert, the concert itself. Um, this is to reduce that area that they're going to have the concert on.
Okay.
And there, there is another application for the golf tournament. I believe, yeah, with another separate reduction. So this is for the concert only.
Okay. Are we, are we in danger of having any gaps in license coverage?
Um, there, there's two separate applications. So one is processed via the administration. And this one, is this a bigger event where you're going to have approximately 2,000 people? And neighboring homes.
Okay.
For Kapolei.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
So okay then, leaving a talk.
Yes.
Reduct.
Yes, I believe so.
So my motion would be to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, one.
Second. And move then second and to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, one. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, request is granted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sato. All right, moving back to the regular agenda. Calling agenda item number 22, application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, nine, six from Free Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Chair, Matthew Troy, Manager for Free Spirits LLC. We do have one change to the report. It's only going to be on Saturday now, so Sunday's event has been canceled.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for the applicant?
So that changes, are going to change your approximate number of people attending? Will it be less than 1,000 or will it still be considered 1,000?
We're still looking at about 1,000 per day, but we did chat the tickets that you can buy online at 1,500.
You think about 1,000 for the one Saturday?
Yeah, we weren't getting a lot of traction for the second day anyway, so we just canceled it.
And so you have this here 12 private security, people with 10 applicant employees. And they listed a special duty police officer. Do you know if it's going to be one or do you have a number yet?
We have to work with them for an exact number, but we're looking at two plus the stadium has a swap meet that day, so they'll already have additional security and off-duty on-premise for this one.
So. So my motion would be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, nine, six with the notation that Saturday, September 24th event is canceled.
Of Sunday.
I'm sorry, Sunday, the 25th is canceled, correct?
Correct.
I need to remake my motion. A second.
Then move then second and to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, nine, six for Saturday, September 24th only. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Suchiya. Nice to see you as well.
You, yes.
Calling agenda item number 23, applications number two, three dash zero, zero, four, zero, zero, dash, one through two, three dash zero, zero, four, zero, zero, dash, four, two, inclusive from Aroma Cafe, Minister Wielka.
Good evening, Chair, Members of the Commission. Robert Wielka on behalf of Aroma Cafe, also present to my right is Barbara Campbell. She is here from, I have number 31, but she's the Vice President and Retail Leasing and Property Management. Also available via Zoom is Mr. Jonathan Rotman. He is the President of Aroma Cafe. He was actually, we're all here since 4 o'clock, but he has, he's been awarded, or been recognized for an award later Saturday, this evening. But yeah, I believe, but he is available via Zoom, thank goodness.
Thank you for reminding everyone here that's paying attention that it's now evening time.
Thank you for your patience. We're not quite at the halfway point.
Hard work. So no change in investigative report. This is for an extension of existing special liquor license for the first floor of Waikiki Beach Colmer. It's, it's been operated by Aroma Cafe with no issue.
Right, Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
Any questions? My motion would be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, four, zero, zero, dash, one through two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, zero, zero, dash, four, two, inclusive.
Second. And move then second and to approve agenda item 23. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, applications are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're taking 31 out of orders, is that correct?
Again, Robert Wielka on behalf of Waikiki Beach Colmer, present to my right is Barbara Campbell. She is the Vice President of Retail Leasing and Property Management. We've no change in investigative report. This is based on the previous special liquor license application.
Let me just make sure we have an agenda that this is for request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, zero, one. And this is to temporarily, temporarily reduce your license premises, is that correct?
That's correct.
Commissioners.
My motion would be to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, zero, one.
Thank you. And move then second and to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, zero, one. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, request is granted. Thank you, Mr. Wielka.
Thank you so much.
Back to the regular agenda. Temporary license applications, calling agenda item number 25, application number two, two dash two, four, nine, zero, five, Royal Marina Investment, DBA Harbor Village Cuisine, Ms. Melcher.
Oh, wait, wait.
Sorry.
I thought we were on 24.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did I skip one? I skipped something. Okay, I'm sorry. We're on preliminary hearings. My bad.
We're not going up yet.
Calling agenda. Yeah, you gotta say something.
Whatever you guys want, you're fine with me, you know?
Long day. Application number two, two dash two, four, four, six, five from Me Tang LLC, DBA King of Thai Boat Noodle, to Mr. Nishio.
Thank you, Acting Chair, Members of the Commission, great Nishio for the applicant authorized, post authorization. We have received investigative report. No additions, changes, we're the same. I'll also note that there was a notation of a fingerprinting, Mr. or Ms. Tang are in the process of getting fingerprinting done.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
I'm going to approve application number two, two dash two, four, four, six, five.
Second. And move then second and to approve application number two, four, four, six, five, I mean, two, two dash two, four, four, six, five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Nishio. I'm sorry, Ms. Melcher, now's your turn. The calling agenda item 25, application number two, two dash two, four, nine, zero, five from Royal Marina Investment, DBA Harbor Village Cuisine.
Good afternoon, Chairs and Commissioners, Robin Melcher on behalf of the applicant, Roy Melcher Investment Inc. And also appearing is Andrew Lee via Zoom. We have reviewed the report and there are no amendments or changes.
Any questions or type of action?
My motion would be to approve application number two, two dash two, four, nine, zero, five.
Second. And move then second and to approve application number two, two dash two, four, nine, zero, five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for your patience. Uh, this is a caterer license application, calling agenda item number 26, application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, four, two from Subexo America LLC. Hello, good afternoon.
Yeah.
I'm not used to seeing you here. I see you.
Justin Solusad, S O L U, S O D, authorized agent for Subexo America LLC. There's no, nothing changed from the investigative report.
And this is for the Kohlhofer concert, correct?
Yes. I'm going to get a ticket code, which is pretty depressing. It's at only 2,100, which we're projecting, I think on the report, we got up to 40,000. We're looking more like, at like the 3,500 mark, but we'll keep it at 5,000. We'll be hopeful.
Be optimistic.
Automatic, of course.
Okay, thank you for that updated numbers.
For sure.
Uh, Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
To approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, four, two.
Second. And move then second and to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, four, two. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Solusad. I believe that brings us to agenda item 28, correct? Agenda item number 28, request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, one, two from Green Chateau, DBA Pure Gentleman, Pure Hawaii Gentleman's Club Coyote Nights, Mr. Pennet.
Good evening, Chairs and Commissioners, James Pennet on behalf of Green Chateau. This is for the license, requesting the license to be kept in safety, to renew it in safety.
What has been the delay, Mr. Pennet? What has been the delay, Mr. Pennet?
Just life, how things are.
Okay, commissioners.
One quick question, how long has it been in safekeeping, sorry? The license?
Just during the pandemic.
Okay, so it's twenty, okay. So my motion be to approve request number two, three, dash, zero, zero, three, one, eight.
Thank you.
Then move then second and to approve request number two, three, dash, zero, zero, three, one, eight, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I motion is carried, request is approved. Thank you, nice to you.
Thanks for coming in, we couldn't hear you last time.
Yeah, sorry, no, no, it's not your fault, we all have that sometimes, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Uh, calling agenda item twenty-nine, request number two, three, dash, zero, zero, three, one, nine from Ale Steak LLC DBA Village Bottle Shop and Tasting Room, Mr. Golden.
Good evening, Timothy Golden, partner.
Does our request to temporarily increase your license premises for Saturday, September seventeenth, is that correct?
Correct.
And what is this increase being requested for?
It's the Salt Oktoberfest.
Awesome, okay. And so you folks are gonna be using that like warehouse space next to your establishment, is that correct?
Correct, the barn.
Commissioners.
My motion be to approve request number two, three, dash, zero, zero, three, one, nine.
Second.
Then move then second and to approve request number two, three, dash, zero, zero, three, one, nine, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I request is granted. Thank you, Mr. Golden, and good luck.
Thank you.
Can I get a type of action, commissioners, for agenda items thirty-two through forty-two?
My motion be to adopt, um, adopt a decision in order for agenda items thirty-two through forty, oh, sorry, forty inclusive.
Thank you.
Forty-two, sorry.
I guess.
My motion be, uh, to adopt decision in order for agenda items thirty-two through forty-two inclusive.
Thank you.
Then second, uh, so for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items thirty-two through forty-two inclusive, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, the adoption of decision in order have been approved. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Jacob, before we move into adjudications, can we get a five-minute recess? Thank you.
Sorry.
We, uh, we're taking a five-minute break. All right, thank you for giving us that time, um, calling agenda item, I'm sorry, Mr. Jacob, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, commissioners, Daniel Jacob, Deputy Preparation Counsel on behalf of the city and county of Honolulu.
Thank you, I'm calling agenda item forty-three, Twelfth Avenue Grill. You have someone appearing for agenda item.
Yes, good evening, commissioners, my name's Kevin Hanny, I'm the owner and manager of Twelfth Avenue Grill.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacob, can you read your card?
Honor about October thirtieth, twenty, licenseee, timely submitted, every person employed on the license premise who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date, and such manner is directed by the violation, violation three, dash, eighty-two, dash, thirty-eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Hanny, how would you like your plea?
Uh, no contest with an explanation.
Thank you, motion to accept the plea.
Thank you.
Then move then second and to accept the no contest plea for agenda item, item three, three, any objection or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendations?
It's a first-time violation, recommended fines two hundred and fifty hours.
Yeah, Mr. Hanny, go ahead.
Uh, I just, I, you know, I'm sorry, I, I'm here for two and I missed exactly which one that was, but for the, the manager, a manager not on duty, we actually had a manager on duty, but she was not punched in.
Okay, this charges for not submitting the name of every person employed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay, uh, yeah, that is the same plea, but, uh, yes, we were closed at that time and we just didn't do a good job of keeping up with, uh, it was during the pandemic and we were closed for quite a few months and just didn't do a very good job keeping up with our bookkeeping.
When did you reopen?
Uh, we reopened in the end of, at the end of November of that year.
Motion to issue a letter of reprimand for the item forty-three.
Then move then second and to, is to a letter of reprimand for agenda item forty, forty, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also, I a letter of reprimand will be issued. Calling agenda item forty-four, Twelfth Avenue Grill.
Uh, good evening, commissioners, I'm Kevin Hanny, the owner and manager of Twelfth Avenue Grill.
Jacob, can you read the card?
Honor about August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have a duly registered manager and active charge of licensed premises during the time the establishment is licensed to sell or serve liquor in violation of rule three, dash, eighty-two, dash, thirty-eight point nine, sub-A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Hanny, how would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest with a explanation.
Our motion is accepted, please.
Second.
Then move then second and to accept the no contest plea for agenda item forty-four, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
It's a first-time violation, recommended fines five hundred dollars.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hanny.
We did have a manager on, uh, duty that night, but she had not punched him. I just wanted to clarify, we did have a manager.
Could you, could you, could you?
Uh, that we had a manager on duty, but she was not punched in as required, I just wanted to, uh, clarify that we did have a manager there.
Different recommended fine of five hundred dollars for the, the, the forty-four?
Then move then second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item forty-four, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I motion is carried, um, a five hundred dollar fine is approved. Just thank you, Mr. Hanny.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, calling agenda item forty-five, Back Alley Cafe.
Good evening, commissioners, Guy Montalvo on behalf of Back Alley Cafe, also present, one of the owners, Linda Thai.
Who's her last name?
Uh, T H A I.
Jacob, can you read the card, please?
We'll wait for it, if we may.
Excuse me?
We'll, we'll, we'll wait for, oral reading of the charges.
Okay.
However, we would ask that, uh, we, we entered denials on this matter, ask that it be settled.
Okay. Thank you. I guess motion to, uh, to continue agenda item forty-five for contested hearing at the next available hearing date?
Then move then second and to continue agenda item forty-five for contested hearing, the next available hearing date. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, agenda item forty-five is continued for contested hearing. Um, calling agenda item forty-six, Back Alley Cafe, Mr. Matunaga again, please.
Yes, once again, good evening, Guy Montalvo on behalf of Back Alley, present is also Mr. Thai. Same thing, we'll, we'll wait for, of those charges enter a denial as well.
Thank you, motion to continue agenda forty-six for contested hearing on the next available hearing date?
Thank you.
Then move then second and to continue agenda item forty-six for contested hearing at the next available hearing date. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, uh, can, agenda item forty-six is continued to the next available date for contested hearing. Calling agenda item forty-seven, Back Alley Cafe.
It's a Ken, good evening, Guy Montalvo for Back Alley. With on this time, once again, we'll wait for, of those charges, ask the matter to be settled for.
Motion to continue agenda forty-seven for contested hearing on the next available hearing date?
Then move then second and to continue agenda item forty-seven for contested hearing for the, at the next available hearing date. Uh, any objection to reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, agenda item forty-seven is continued, and, um, Mr. Matunaga, I wanna make clear, um, that, you are entering, um, denials for all charges within the agenda items, agenda items, okay, thank you. All right, so agenda item forty-seven is continued to the next available date, uh, calling agenda item forty-eight, Back Alley Cafe.
And once again, good evening, Guy Montalvo for Back Alley Cafe with, uh, this time, once again, we'll wait for, of those charges and ask for a decision.
Motion to continue agenda forty-eight to the next available hearing date for contested hearing?
Second.
Then move then second and to continue agenda item forty-eight, uh, to the next available hearing date for contested hearing. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I motion is carried, agenda item forty-eight is continued. I think this is the last one, correct?
I believe so.
Oh, no, I've got a couple more. Calling agenda item forty-nine, Back Alley Cafe.
Good evening, Guy Montalvo for Back Alley Cafe, also present at this time, once again, we'll wait for reading of those charges, ask for a contested hearing as well.
Motion to continue agenda forty-nine to the next available hearing date for a contested hearing?
Second.
Then move then second and to continue agenda item forty-nine to the next available hearing date for contested hearing. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I motion is carried, agenda item forty-nine is continued. Uh, one further roll, Mr. Matunaga, calling agenda item number fifty, Back Alley Cafe.
And once again, Guy Montalvo for Back Alley Cafe, with news, Mr. Thai, we'll wait for reading of those charges, uh, excuse me, we'll enter agenda denial, except we set word.
Before I make my motion, Commissioner Buckley is kind enough to read to you our rules and procedures for contested hearing, I'm not sure if you ever heard those before?
I have not, but I will.
Okay, so let me make my motion first, but before you leave, let him put on the record, are, okay?
Yes.
Motion to continue agenda item fifty for a contested hearing on the next available hearing date?
Second.
Then move then second and to continue agenda item fifty for contested hearing at the next available date. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, agenda item fifty is continued.
Mr. Matunaga, since you have pled not guilty and wish to return for a contested hearing, there are a few procedures that the commission would like to outline at this time. Uh, first, seven days before the contested hearing, both prosecution and the licensee must disclose to each other their proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may be considered, uh, may not be considered at the contested hearing. Second, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and proposed testimony each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Third, each party's exhibits must be uploaded to the liquor commission's Google Drive by four P M. on the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished will be provided to the parties and will be available on the liquor commission's website shortly. If you have physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both the liquor commission and the other party know. As a reminder to each party, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birth dates, bank account numbers must be redacted by the party, because exhibit contains that information.
Any questions? And you'll get that in writing as well.
Great.
Uh, Mr. Jacob, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item fifty-one, Bar Mays.
Acting Chair Neil Goto has contacted me and requested a continuance on this matter until September fifteenth, I have no objection.
That's right, can we continue this matter?
Oh, wait a second, I think we do not have a setting on the fifteenth.
Oh, I apologize, okay, then the twenty-ninth.
Can we reset it for September twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Done?
Okay, um, calling agenda item fifty-two, Hook's Pan Ro.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Commissioner Robin Melcher, the representative of the applicant, we will recall, we waive public reading of the charge into a fee of no contest exchange. And appearing via Zoom is Chase from one of the members of the Hook's Panels LLC.
Thank you, motion accepted, please.
Second.
Then move then second and to accept the no contest plea for agenda item fifty-two, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob?
So violation occurred on November first, twenty-twenty-one, when the licensee transferred the license without notifying the commission, this is a first-time violation, recommended fines five hundred dollars.
Melcher?
So, um, I'm not quite sure understand the charge, because the application was submitted on about November fifteenth. Prior to the submission of the application, a request for approval of the services agreement was made, which was approved for Hook Panels to operate under the license, and the premises was closed for almost a year and did not open until after the commission approved the services agreement to operate, so, um, they were not operating the restaurant until, again, that the services agreement was approved in, on November eighteen. So the premises was closed for almost a year prior to that. Therefore, we request either the charge being dismissed or a letter of reprimand.
Jacob, any comment?
No comments.
If there's any question? Did you show a letter of reprimand for agenda item fifty-two?
Thank you.
Then move then second and to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item fifty-two, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you, Mr. Melcher. Calling agenda item fifty-three, La Cucaracha Mexican Bar and Grill.
Uh, acting chair, before we proceed on this matter, please let the record reflect that I must recuse myself under, um, agenda item number fifty-three due to a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Buckley, your excuse.
My name is Senator Parker, I'm one of the owners of La Hui Bar and Grill.
Thank you.
Forts Law, I'm also a partner for, uh, the Mayak Bar.
Thank you.
Jacob, can you read the card, please?
Honor about September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensing of physical alterations within its license premises to a addition of a separation wall with pass-through window, addition of a small office security room, addition of a double-door entry, addition of dividing call-in kitchen, addition of outdoor storage and removal of stairs without the prior written approval of the liquor commission, in violation of rule three, dash, eighty-three, dash, sixty-two, sub-A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
So, Mr. Parker, how do you wish to plead?
Kindness with explanation.
Thank you, a motion to accept the plea, second.
Then move then second and to accept the no contest plea for agenda item fifty-three, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, the no contest plea is accepted.
So Jacob, what is your recommendation?
It's a first-time violation, the recommended fines five hundred dollars.
Mr. Parker, go ahead.
Uh, we took over business from La Cucaracha, uh, for last twenty-twenty-one, or late twenty-twenty-one. Um, to our knowledge, we didn't, or we didn't know about any existing changes until we applied for our liquor license. And when we did, um, the, our investigator told us that we need to submit an approval for the changes, which we did, uh, last, on November of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, so because we received our liquor license, I assumed that, uh, approval was accepted and that was all we needed to do.
Okay, so you're representing that these are changes made before you obtain a license?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob, any comment?
No comments.
How long ago did you folks take over this license?
Well, we opened on June, but we, we received our temporary license, because you did a transfer from La Cucaracha and we received our liquor license in last, of you. Yeah. Well, we, we opened for business on June twenty-first of twenty-twenty-one.
So you folks are very recent owners.
Yes.
And you, you have this business transfer to you and there were changes made to the, uh, to the premises prior to you taking over this license, is that what you're representing?
Yes.
Motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item.
Second.
Then move then second and to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item fifty-three, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I, a letter of reprimand will be issued, just for future reference, if you folks are looking to make any physical alterations, you need to get prior approval from the commission before doing so, okay? Um, actually, we're not, we're trying to get to this agenda, if you have questions, you can call the office during regular business hours and they'll be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item fifty-four, the modern Honolulu, Mr. Uyoka.
Good evening, chair, members of the commission, Cecilia, Robert Uyoka on behalf of the modern Honolulu, present to my right is Kaya. Evening, Chair, members of the commission. This is your I Robert Uyoka on behalf of the modern Honolulu present to my right is Kehlani Kehlani alone. He's a general manager at the modern Honolulu. It's something like the way we read the charge and therefore we have no contest with.
Then move then second and to accept the no contest fee for agenda item fifty four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I the no contest fee is accepted.
So Jacob, could you provide your recommendation and also the factual basis for this charge?
Uh, this violation occurred on September eighteen, twenty twenty one, when the licensee permitted entertainment, which caused complaints from the public. In regards to sounds emanating from the license premises causing undue disturbance, which disrupted the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. This is licensee's first violation, recommended fines five hundred dollars. However, I'll note that the licensee had received two prior warnings, one on November second, two thousand seventeen, one on July eighteen, twenty twenty one.
Their recommendation was five hundred.
Five hundred dollars.
Mr. Uyoka.
It resulted from a complaint from drums. We had it a special event, kind of like a luau for the managers. I mean, it was not in a like in a normal event for our group of people. Um, it was just for the managers. Uh, it was a non paid event. Uh, we did it one time and we from now on, we're never going to do drums again. Uh, we discontinued having any drums and we're monitoring sound levels. We have decibel meters and we're making sure this never happens again. Uh, no drums in the future.
What area of the hotel was this?
It's in the upper floor deck. So because Elikai has residences, it resulted in complaints. You know, we we take responsibility for the event, but we we are, we're gonna definitely not do it again.
I have a question. Um, what time was this violation issued? Do you have an approximate time and the?
This September eighteen, twenty twenty one, and the complaint came in at six fifty-four P M. And by the time the investigator got there, I think it was about seven thirty. So it was it was early. I'm probably still lit at the time.
September eighteenth, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the day of the week. Was this on Monday?
It was a Saturday.
It was a Saturday at about seven P M.
Seven P M.
Thank you.
I was just one point of clarification. Um, there were two prior warnings issued. Was that related to drums or other activity?
My understanding, it was just to to the noise. Um, so like I said, since then, we did get the decibel meters to prevent any future violations. I think we made some adjustments with the speakers, kind of faced it inward versus outward. Uh, we realized Elikai is nearby, so we really tried to minimize it in future.
It's going to be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, but suspend collection of that for one year so long as a similar violation doesn't occur again. And if it does, the commission will not only. Could go fine for a subsequent violation, but this fine will come due on.
Then move then second and to prove the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. However, we will suspend collection of that. For a period of one year, provided no similar violations occur. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I emotion is carried.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Calling agenda item fifty five, Anheuser Busch Sales of Hawaii.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commission members, Kenetor appearing for the Autumn Company, also appearing by Zoom is Dana Lessie, the CFO. Of the Autumn Company, we reading the charge and your plea of no contest.
Chair, I sure um, I'll make a disclosure. Um, so L W does represent employees who work at Anheuser Busch Sales, Hawaii, AKA the Autumn Corporation. I am not their um, employee direct representative. Um, this will not affect my ability to be impartial in deciding on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollinger, for that representation.
Second.
Then move then second and to accept the no contest fee for agenda item fifty five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I motion is carried. No contest fee is approved.
Jacob.
This violation occurred on honor about August twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, when the licensee made physical alterations within its license premise without prior written approval from the commission. Including the installation of a security rail, removal of a draft cooler and an addition of a wall. Uh, this is a first time violation, recommended fines five hundred dollars.
Mr. Who?
I noticed a violation in this case was issued in uh, July or August of twenty twenty one, when the license was held by Anheuser Busch. Autumn company is a transferee of the license. Um, this license premises have been there probably for fifty years. Uh, Eagle distributors and I suppose so the autumn company took it over. We filed the transfer application, we filed four plans given to us by Anheuser Busch, seeing that this is the four plans. And what the investigator did is his preliminary investigation ignored it, were different from the four plans on record. I don't know how old the records are that the liquor should have on its premises. Fifty years old, and it's likely that changes have been made, but we didn't make.
Understood, Mr. Wong.
Mr. Jacob, any common response?
No comment.
Motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda fifty five.
Then move then second and to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item fifty five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you, Mr. Wong.
If you could take number fifty seven of the water, this study hall of client uh, headquarter doctor is not able to attend. Want to continue for two weeks.
Okay, let me call the agenda item. Uh, calling agenda item fifty seven, Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill, Mr. Who?
Yes, we would, Kenetor appearing for the licensee and kind they asked for continuance for two weeks because the. The licensee is unable to make this hearing, but the doctors.
Objection. Sorry, are we here in two weeks?
Nine, uh, September eighth, sorry. That's fine.
Okay, we'll just continue it to September eighth, Mr. Who?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item fifty six, Posh Enterprise. Mr. Kim, nice to see you.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear. All right, thank you for having me today. So, hello, I remember, hello, acting chair, members of the liquor commission. My name is Danny Kim, representing Posh Enterprise.
Jacob, can we read the charge?
Honor about October twenty second, twenty twenty one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensing permitted to sales service or consumption of liquor on or within the license premises before or after hours established by the liquor commission. To at twelve oh five A M. And violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point two zero sub A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Kim, how do you like to plead?
I will be pleading no contest, uh, but I do want to explain.
Okay, we'll give you that opportunity. Motion to.
Thank you.
Then move then second and to accept the no contest fee for agenda item fifty six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I the no contest fee is accepted.
So Jacob, what's your recommendation?
This is licensee's first violation. The base fine is five hundred dollars and we recommend adding ten dollars for every five minutes because investigator showed up at twelve oh five, the recommended fine is five hundred and fifty dollars.
You go ahead, Mr. Kim.
Um, I'm sorry, um, my, it's it's clear that my mom wasn't in her in her right mind. Um, actually, she wasn't actually working for almost a year at that establishment. Um, due to the fact, uh, when uh, when the whole pandemic stroke, uh, she actually went through some situations in Waikiki where. She got physically assaulted and beaten up. Uh, she was literally in the hospital. She had to go under uh, under surgery as well. Um, she got better into those, uh, at that timeframe when the commission came, she actually, uh, I'm I'm sorry, when the investigator came. Uh, she actually goes there to pick up my dad and my my sister. It is a family run business. Uh, so she went there. She actually wanted to help out. She went behind the register. I told her, never go behind that register until once you get better. Uh, she went behind that register, not knowing what's going, what's what's happening, not not knowing the time. She was under medication at that time as well, too. Um, so uh, obviously, both shouldn't be transpiring uh, in that level. Uh, so she knows she did wrong. She actually didn't really realize it until I went there to take a look at the whole um, video as well. So. Understandly, she did, she did wrong. So, and she's facing the consequences today. So I do apologize on behalf of my mother. But uh, under that whole situation, you know, she's 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 not back at work just yet. She's just here and there. Uh, but she did have to go through a lot uh, during the pandemic, you know, she did go under surgery. So I'm asking for some sort of maybe a reduction or or anything like that to help her out because uh, it was a tough period of our time as well.
Jacob, any response?
I'll just note that the investigator file says that liquor investigators witnessed um, a female employee behind the cash register. A male told the female that he'd been purchasing two cans, exchanged cash. The customer returned to a refrigerator cooler, selected the cans himself. And that's the facts of this violation.
My motion is going to be to approve a fine of five hundred dollars for agenda fifty six.
Then second and to approve a five hundred dollar fine for agenda item fifty six. Any objections or reservations? I will I with reservations, motion is carried, a um, five hundred dollar fine will be issued. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thank you very much, guys.
Your mom needs a break. You can work for.
I know. So sorry, guys. Appreciate it.
Calling agenda item fifty eight, the cart house, Mr. Kiwi.
Good afternoon, men, chairman, members of the commission, keep huge for the licensee, the item, agenda item fifty wave reading of the charge and a plea of no contest.
Second.
Then move then second and to accept the no contest fee for agenda item fifty eight. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I the no contest fee is accepted.
This violation occurred on November twentieth, twenty twenty, when the licensee failed to submit its employee listing. This is the first violation for the licensee, a recommended fines two hundred and fifty dollars.
My understanding is there were a few days late, um, and I really don't know the reason.
Then move then second and to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for the item fifty eight. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I motion is carried, fine is approved. Calling agenda item fifty nine, the cart house.
Again, good afternoon, men, chair, members of the commission, keep huge licensee wavering of the charge and we denied the charge.
Are you ready to?
We're 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 ready to proceed. I think Mr. Jacob and I kind of streamlined this.
Correct, okay. Were we moving to the contest hearing to the commissioners?
We can proceed.
If, um. Sir, Jacob, you ready to proceed as well?
You're saying?
How many witnesses do you plan?
Um, I I don't intend on calling a witness at this time, however, I would like to reserve the right to call Daniel Sato in the event of commissions had commissioners had any questions.
I have no witnesses. I think we both agreed to stipulate to the exhibits that were uploaded to the missions. That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Jacob, what are your exhibits, Mark?
Um, I believe it's been uploaded as exhibit, one exhibit, that's the investigator file report.
Very letter.
Uh, it's twenty twenty one dash zero four four one. I see it on my screen. I'm looking at here.
Do you have defense exhibits A three?
A through E, yes, and no, no, you're right, A three, that's correct.
Then, um, Mr. Jacob, um, just to confirm you stipling to the defense exhibits as well?
Yes.
Okay, the commission will admit its evidence prosecution exhibit one and defense exhibits A through E. Um, Mr. Kiwi, any concerns about Mr. Jacob's reservations of his right to call Mr. Sato?
No, I don't.
Do either of you want me to go through the procedural rules? Okay, why don't we just go right into open statement? Go ahead, Mr. Jacob.
Um, so the, this case involves the allegation that on January twenty twenty of twenty twenty one, the licensee failed to obtain commission approval for a transfer of stock. Uh, as the evidence will show, as I'll pull up here, there was two transfers in which uh, the commission was not made aware of until subsequent, well after thirty days on May tenth. Or March tenth, I apologize. Um, and that is the evidence is simply that the licensee failed to. Get approval from the commission on those two stock transfers.
Mr. Kiwi.
The uh, two stock transfers involved were not transfers. The first one was a transfer. Um, really of stock into Joy Joseph Cabell's. This is Joey Cabell, the uh, long, long retired surfer. Mr. Cabell was the sole owner of Chart House. And what he did is he transferred the stock into his trust. So there wasn't a change of the owner. And the statute reads, provided that in the case of the change of ownership of twenty-five percent. Or more of the voting capital stock, or in the case of change in ownership of any number of shares stock. The results in the transferee thereof become the owner twenty-five percent or more of the outstanding voting capital stock. So we assert that as to transfer one, this was not a change of ownership because Mr. Cabell remained uh, the owner. Mr. Cabell transferred into his trust. He is the only trustee of his trust as the exhibits will show. So therefore, there was no transfer. The second transfer was a transfer of stock back to the corporation that uh, Mr. Cabell did on the advice of his attorney. That is also not a transfer because the corporation is not a transferee. You look further on two eighty-one forty-one, which is my exhibit A. The purpose of this statute is that the commission man's discretion revoke or suspend the license until determines that the transferee is a fit and proper person. The corporation in itself, when you transfer stock back, it's not a, it's not a fit and proper person. The reason of the notification is for the commission to determine whether the transferee is a fit and proper person. So in both cases, Mr. Cabell transfers his stock to his own trust, or if he transfers it back to the corporation, the statute is not.
There's no witnesses. Um, what's your pledge, Mr. Jacob? How do you want to?
I would just like to show the commission the two, if I can maintain control of this computer, the the two transfer of stocks. That are in the investigative report. I'd just like the commission to take note of that. And I'll reserve any further comments or closing argument.
You want to walk us through this or just want to make sure we take a look at?
I just wanted to make sure you took a look at the the certificate. I'm sorry. Apparently, I do not see them in the C A report, even though my copy here in front of me has them.
Um, you're referring to?
Yeah. The actual stock certificate. If I could show the mission, unfortunately, it's for whatever reason not in mine. We have two stock certificates, and I don't, I don't believe opposing counsel disputes that they exist. One is um, stock of Cap, uh, Cabell Enterprises. And it's issued to Joseph B. Cabell Revocable Living Trust, and that was on August twenty second, two thousand nineteen. The second certificate indicates that uh, stock. Our capital stock was issued from Cabell Enterprises to Joseph Cabell trustee of the Joseph Cabell Revocable Living Trust on December twenty first, twenty twenty. These are the two transfers that we believe the commission should have been notified on. I appreciate.
Do you have any, sorry, do you have any clean copies of those certificates?
I I have the copies in front of me in my investigative pack to apologize. I'm unsure why they're not. Um, I'd be happy to give you my copies.
Are they marked up?
No.
And Mr. Kiwi, you have any objection?
I have no objection because one of my exhibits describes the transferring.
Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't, um, we'll just um, accept and mark as prosecution exhibit two, the two stuff, the stock certificates described by Mr. Jacob. And we will make that part of the record.
Thank you. I know that's all I have. Thank you.
The city, right?
Yes.
Mr. Kiwi, what's your pleasure?
I, I think I'm just going to walk through the exhibits. D and E are really not applicable because originally we thought. There was a problem uh, in investigative report with the actual transfer to it to capital partners. But um, I'm gonna walk you through uh, A, B, and C. So A is the statute question, which is two eighty-one forty-one. So exhibit A is the statute itself, that's two eighty-one forty-one. So what I talked about in the opening was it applies if you have a transfer, a change in ownership. And the assertion is there's no change in ownership. We look further down, uh, it talks about the commission making a determination that the transferee is a fit and proper person. Exhibit B is the short form trust agreement for Mr. Cabell's trust. I've attached that because Mr. Cabell was the shareholder, Mr. Cabell is the trustee of his own trust. There is no other trustee. There's a successor trustee, which is his wife, Yana. The third exhibit, exhibit C is the resolution, and this describes the transaction. So the second transaction is what it describes, trustee and the corporation have agreed that the corporation acquires twenty-one hundred forty shares from the trust. So what you have, as I described earlier, is you got to trust, transfer into somebody's trust. Trustee is the same as the individual shareholders. And you got to transfer back to the corporation. So we're certain both of those aren't transferred. And with that, I run.
Not sure if you guys want to be closing, but go ahead.
Make a quick closing statement.
Please.
Um, you know, the rule does require that uh licensing notify the commission within thirty days of the stock transfer. Uh, in this case, it just so happens that it was an individual who was transferred the license to a trust, which he was the controller of and the sole beneficiary of. That doesn't necessarily had to have been the case, however. Um, it's possible that a trust could be involve other people addition, in addition to the one person who the the trust is conceived for, and it's thus, those sort of notifications that the commission needs to be provided so that the commission does know that indeed this is an owner transferred from one one person to another person in simply the form of a trust. Uh, there could have easily have been other people involved with that transfer that would have gone unknown to the commission. Uh, but again, it just so happens in this case, but part of the reasons of filing is to notify the commission it's happened and and let them review the documents to ensure that uh there's no additional parties to that that transfer uh that would require additional research on on behalf of the person accepting that license. Thank you.
You know, I've argued this, I think, already, but it, the fact remains that the trust, which is attached to the exhibit B, doesn't have any other trustees. There are no other individuals involved, so really it's just a transfer to yourself. And the way revocable living trusts are treated is like your own property, so it's really isn't a transfer out from Mr. Cabell to anybody else. The other uh part of the equation is a transfer of stock back to the corporation, which is not an appropriate transferee. That's basically sending stock back as corporate stock to the corporation, and that's also not a transfer under the statute. That's why it taps the statute, because the purpose of the statute is for the commission to determine whether the transferee is a fit and proper person. So you don't have that here. You don't have that here. You don't have a.
Okay, Mr. Um, Jacob, any? Mission will.
Right now, back on the record, thank you for giving that time for us to deliver, um, commissioners.
Gentlemen, I think um you both, both, you both both gave us um good ethical arguments on how it's a bit of a statue that applies to us. The commission is going to find that the allegation is sustained for.
Then second into find the allegations sustained for agenda item fifty nine. I'm I'm sorry, the violation of sustained for agenda item fifty nine. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, uh, the violations are sustained.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
It's a first time violation, the recommended fines five hundred dollars.
Motion's going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for general.
Then move then second into issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item fifty nine. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you, Mr. Kuti.
Thank you. That helps give me the rep.
Right, I'm calling agenda item sixty. Mr. Rai, liquor administrator, any administrative matters that were not provided in the weekly report?
Nope.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item sixty one, liquor commission, election of interim chairperson for two thousand twenty-two.
I'm sure I have a motion to elect you, Malama Min, as interim chair for twenty twenty-two, second.
Then move then second into elect me. Interim chairperson. Do you have any objections or reservations? Yes, the motion is carried. I will not vote for myself. Um, I appreciate and accept the appointment. Thank you, and with no other.
Wait, 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 sorry, before we gavel out, so you have the opportunity, as we do uh normally in December, to indicate your your chair, your vice chair, co-vice chair situation, or you can leave it as is. I'm just.
Seeing as we do not have a fifth commissioner, um, I I will I'm choosing to have, we near Cheryl remain as vice chair. And we will appoint a co-vice chair when a fifth commissioner is selected by the mayor. Is that okay? All right, so we have a chair and a vice chair.
Oh, one more question. Sorry. So for next week's agenda, do you wish me to schedule an executive session to discuss uh the resolution?
Yes, please. Yes, I think we do need to discuss it. And if that is the earliest opportunity to do so, then yes, please add it to the agenda, Mr. Rai. Thank you. Um, seeing as there's no other business, meeting is adjourned.